Good evening, I'd like to call to the meeting of Belkirk City Council. Today is Monday, September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. If you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. And it is. Okay, thank you. Hey, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Hope.
Here.
Mr. Havens.
Here.
Dr. Van Veldheisen.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Schwalter.
Here, thank you. Uh, everyone should have the minutes of our last meeting, which was Monday, October the twenty-fourth. Does anyone have any changes or correction to those minutes?
None, Mayor.
Anybody else?
None, for me.
Mayor. Hearing none, I declare those minutes, uh, correct as submitted. Under Mayor's announcements, a special guest, we do have a special guest tonight. The Green County Assistant Health Commissioner Noah Stube. I know Noah is in the, in the room right now, so Noah, at this point in time, will turn it over to you.
Alrighty, uh, thank you, everyone, for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a little update on what's going on in Green County Public Health, um, especially as we enter this, uh, levy, levy year. Um, we know public health has been a huge, huge topic, given what we're all dealing with, with the pandemic. So I do have a brief PowerPoint, um, to kind of walk through. I know I have limited time, so, um, whenever we can get that up, uh, be good to go. I can bring it up on my screen, too, if you want to just let me share it, it, whatever's easier for you.
We'll let our quick additions decide who's best.
Works for me. Can, can anyone see that?
I see it.
Awesome. Uh, so I'll just go ahead and go through the presentation on my computer then, no problem. Okay, uh, so, as I already said, my name is Noah Stube. I'm the Deputy Health Commissioner for Green County Public Health. Um, and today I'm going to give you a brief update about the Health District, this little background, again, about what we do, if you're not that familiar with what public health does. And again, we've kind of been in the spotlight recently with the pandemic, so a lot of people who weren't familiar with public health, um, definitely are now. Um, we are entering into a levy, um, we're on the ballot for November for a five-year renewal, um, for a point eight mil levy, which accounts for about thirty-three percent of our overall budget. Uh, so what is public health? Public health kind of acts as the prescription for a community, and what we mean by that is, so, community, um, has all different facets, and health, um, is equated in several different ways. You have social determinants of health, um, and you have those other areas of health that are more than just medical. So when we think about public health, it's really population health, or it's really holistic and all-encompassing when we think about everything that we touch. Um, again, we work to set population-based health, based health priorities. Um, we do, uh, community health assessment on a regular cycle, so that we can evaluate what's going on within the community. We use that assessment to determine health strategies that we formulate into a community health improvement plan, and then we set out to execute those strategies with community partners to try and help improve the overall population health for Green County. Um, again, that kind of feeds into the next bullet point. We, we are heavily, um, involved in forming partnerships and working collaboratively with those partners to improve health outcomes. Uh, in the Health District, we're kind of divided up into three central areas. We have administrative, environmental health, and they have community health services. Um, within administration, you have things such as, um, birth and death certificates. If you've had to get your driver's license re, your driver's license renewed recently, and you went for the new, um, federal license, you probably came and saw this birth certificate, uh, because they only accept the new issues with the new, um, seal on it. Um, within there, we also have, um, like epidemiology, um, and everybody's probably becoming much more familiar with that term of epidemiology once coming to surveillance now. Um, it's definitely an administrative function, um, within the Health District as we're monitoring communicable disease. Um, in environmental health, um, a lot of people would be familiar with at least restaurant inspections. That's one of the large things people will recognize public health for, is here comes the health inspectors to inspect my restaurant. Um, so, we deal with not only restaurant inspections, but wells, um, pools, septic systems, plumbing. Um, those are all areas of environmental health, as well as nuisance complaints, rabies, you know, dog bites, um, school inspections, all those things are environmental health services provided by public health. Um, then within community health services, uh, we do have communicable disease within there, which, again, a lot of people, um, now that the pandemic, um, has arrived, i- is becoming more familiar with public health's role in that. So within that, uh, we do have epidemiological functions as well. There are regular communicable diseases that we are required to report, um, to the state within certain reporting periods, so we are monitoring those. We do offer health education within there, where we're working on tobacco cessation, instituting policies, um, to reduce that. We work with, um, we have two home visiting programs. One is early intervention, one is home visiting, um, uh, for ages three and above, and then early intervention is from zero to three. Um, and in those programs, we're working with, you know, first-time moms, first-time parents. We're working on improving outcomes within the home to help meet developmental milestones. Um, we also are working on, uh, we have HIV program, um, and several other things like that, you know, working, vaping kind of rolled into tobacco. A syringe exchange is another program we have, as we're focused on the loxone distribution. Um, so, that's kind of the three main branches of the Health District. Uh, then moving on to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter Thirty-seven, is kind of like, uh, it's all about the Health District. It's really the chapter that establishes the Health District, um, and by code establishes all the things that we can do and what we need to do. Um, and then public health, you know, ironically enough, was created in response to the nineteen-nineteen, um, influenza pandemic. So it's kind of come full circle now, as public health kind of comes back into the public spotlight. But we actually were created, um, in response to the, the flu pandemic that so many people are, um, referencing nowadays, um, with COVID. Um, so here at Green County Public Health, we have our vision and we have our mission statement. Our vision is, uh, to be the recognized leader that addresses health outcomes, reduces health disparities, and upholds standards of public health practice and improves services to the community. We really strive to, um, to reach that vision. Um, our mission statement, um, is to prevent disease, promote health and wellness in Green County, and protect the quality of our environment. And just based on the services that we do provide and the service structure and what we adhere to, we really believe that we are striving to live that mission every day. Um, as part of, um, the Health District's strategic planning process, we do each year come up with, uh, strategic priorities, and we review that process in cycles, and we are getting ready to do our next strategic plan, which will be, um, for another three-year period. As part of that process, we pick strategic priorities to focus on for that three-year period. Um, some of the strategic priorities actually come out of what I identified earlier, which is the Community Health Improvement Plan. So we are integrating that feedback from what is the overall health status of the community, and we're integrating that into our own strategic plan, um, and those priorities for us to focus on, to help guide us in the direction to improve those health outcomes. So our seven that we have for this strategic planning cycle is informing and educating. Uh, we want to make sure that we inform the public on essential public health issues. We're focusing on workforce development internally, we're trying to improve our capacity, we're trying to plan for succession. Um, public health right now is kind of riding what is known as the Silver Tsunami. We have a lot of public health workers who are around that age where they're eligible for retirement. We want to make sure that we, um, are actively focused on succession planning, so that we have a well-groomed workforce as we move forward. Um, our next strategic priority is internal communication. We want to make sure that we're, um, accurately and timely communicating information that's going on within the Health District to everyone involved within there, so that everyone's informed, and we're utilizing our various communication methods. Um, we want to focus on information technology, and this is a big one, because information technology, as everyone knows, has become so crucial and integral to keeping this country running, um, with the pandemic, and it's something that everyone has fallen back on. I mean, just look at us tonight on a Zoom, another Zoom call. Um, so it's what everybody's really striving for, and as we move forward and kind of start to emerge out of this pandemic, um, investing in our internal and external data monitoring systems and surveillance systems is definitely an area where public health funding needs to look at and start to invest in, start to improve that infrastructure, um, as we move forward. Um, healthy lifestyles was another one where we want to focus on preventing and managing chronic disease in Green County. Um, health equity, again, with the pandemic, it's kind of shed light on those social determinants of health and those disparities. We want to make sure that we're, um, looking at equitable care across the whole entire spectrum within Green County. And then our last one is maternal, child, and infant health. We want to make sure that families across Green County have equal access, um, to healthcare, including medical and behavioral health services. Um, our programs and services that we provide at the Health District, we kind of have broken up by the foundational public health services model. Um, so you'll see in this, I have foundational capabilities on the left, and those are those things that I've already, some of them I've touched on, which is vital statistics, which is our birth and death certificates, cremation burial permits. We have our emergency preparedness programming, which, again, everyone has become so familiar with. Um, we do focus on planning for these types of things regularly, um, whether it's natural disaster, pandemic, um, scenario. It is a branch of public health that we do focus on, where we have emergency operations plans, um, and regular routine practice and investment in those plans, so that we're prepared when, when emergencies happen. Again, epidemiology, I think we've covered that in a lot of detail already. Um, policy development and support, we're working on, um, developing policies with, um, legislators, um, to improve public health, um, across the state, locally as well, um, feedback on laws, bills, et cetera. Um, Community Communications Speakers Bureau, we want to make sure that we're out in the community. We want to make sure that we're, um, spreading the word about what public health is and what we do. And then again, community partnership development, where we're actively involved in fostering new partnerships, as well as maintaining current ones, and, um, continuing to grow those. Uh, on the right is just the list of all the environmental health services that, that we provide. I've touched on several of them, but you do see, like, um, mosquito controls also in there, I think I left that out. Residential camps, um, solid and infectious wastes, um, most of the other ones I already talked about, but that's a pretty comprehensive list on what our environmental health branch, um, does on a regular basis. Uh, again, we have communicable disease, we have chronic and injury prevention, and we have maternal, child, and family health. And underneath that is just all the different services that fall under those categories within the Health District. Uh, I've mentioned, uh, the safe trade, the HIV, the regular communicable disease reporting. We do monitor tuberculosis. Um, underneath chronic disease injury prevention, uh, we are focused on smoking cessation, no loxone access. And then over in maternal and child health and family health services, uh, I mentioned most of, most of these with the early intervention and the Help and Grow programs. We do have WIC House within the Health District, um, and that's keeping, um, families and children connected to, um, essential nutrition. We also, um, encourage and help with breastfeeding by providing peer helpers. And then we do have the Children with Medical Handicaps Program, in which we try and connect, um, those families who are struggling to pay medical bills and have children who desperately need care, um, to those services. Um, here is just an overview from two thousand and nineteen, kind of our revenue sources, our, um, by, uh, by income stream. Um, as you can see right there, uh, is that thirty-three percent for that point eight mil levy. So as you can see, it's a rather large portion of the revenue that we rely on to help, um, provide these services across the county. The rest of our revenue kind of comes in from licenses and permits, and then grants, and those other sources related to state monies. Um, on the flip side, you can see our expenditures. Then right, we're right around seven million is, uh, roughly what we're at for our operating budget. Um, so a lot of people have been focused on COVID, and as they should be, you know, something that's happened, you know, it's every one-hundred-year thing. Um, but there's also a lot of outbreaks and diseases that we have monitored or have been a part of monitoring in the past. Here's just a kind of list of some of the ones that we have been monitoring. Uh, probably the most recent ones that people have been familiar with has been the Zika, um, the Ebola one that was a couple of years ago, hepatitis outbreak, um, that was the, um, that we had to focus on, and then the measles outbreak that was randomly showing up as well, um, as well as, uh, COVID-nineteen. Uh, just some general information about the levy. Uh, again, we're going to be on the, on the ballot, uh, for November third. It's a point eight mil levy, and it's going to be for five years, and, uh, there's just the Ohio Revised Code chapter that sets up that why, how we are allowed to do this, um, the process in which it goes through, as we submit it to the county commissioners. And then down at the bottom is just, uh, a little snippet of a fact about when the, the first levy was on the ballot, nineteen fifty-four was for point three mils, and what it was dedicated to, um, and then it just kind of goes into some subsequent years, how the, how the levy kind of evolved, um, throughout the years, all the way down to twenty fifteen, which was the last one that was passed. And again, this is just a renewal, it's no additional money. And that's a brief overview. Um, sorry I went through kind of quick, I wanted to make sure I stayed within my timeframe. Um, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak again tonight, and if anybody has any questions, I can certainly take them. Other than that, thank you very much.
Noah, behalf of the city of Belkirk, thank you for the informative presentation. At this time, does anyone in the council have any questions for Noah?
I do quickly, Mayor. Noah, I was just wondering, all the services you provide, how many employees do you have working for the county to provide all that?
Uh, currently, we have about sixty employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I just, I just had one, uh, one question. Um, with the, uh, COVID, uh, issue, have you seen a, uh, increase in budget need? Or is it, uh, being taken care of with current funding?
Oh, right now, we have been seeing a large amount of money being dumped into us from, from being funneled down from the federal level through the state. So it has been, it's been a blessing, because we have dedicated, last time I ran the numbers, we were over, um, five hundred thousand dollars invested in it right now. Um, and that's just basically in the personnel time, it's taking these sixty employees to dedicate, um, to the COVID response. So we have been receiving COVID money to help with our contact tracing efforts and with our overall response. Um, a- and, you know, as of right now, financially speaking, we are doing, we are doing well, um, whi- which is a relief. There has been a lot of health districts across the state who have had to succumb to layoffs and things like that, and I, I can proudly say that we haven't had to lay anybody off, um, so far during the COVID.
Okay.
Welcome.
Uh, Noah, I just have a quick question about vaccinations. Do you guys get involved with those?
A few years, a, a few years ago, sir, um, we actually modernized our services, um, as the FQHC Five Rivers arrived, and they shared the building with us. So those, the services actually are offered by Five Rivers, and, um, we moved out of the vaccination, um, program.
Okay, because I remember if you deploy or went somewhere overseas, uh, you could get them at Green County. Yeah, I was checking again, I've been anywhere in a while, but...
Yes, and, no, and when the, when the vaccine comes out for COVID, we've already registered, um, and we will be providing the vaccine, um, wh- when COVID vaccine is available.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Noah, once again, thank you for the presentation, and, uh, good luck on November the third.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the time and the opportunity.
Thank you, you're welcome. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I want to make a comment that we may have a modification to our schedule for this evening. We do have a CIC presentation, a work session at the end of our meeting, which may in fact be rescheduled. We found out that our city law director has a last-minute conflict, and we should know probably about ten minutes before ready to enter that phase of the meeting, whether or not we'll be able to do it tonight, or we have to reschedule for another time. So kind of hang with us on that. We don't have any public hearings or ordinances tonight, but we do have an introduction of ordinances. Ordinance number twenty twenty-six, Councilwoman Middlestetter, please.
Get my technology in order here, thank you.
No problem.
Ordinance twenty twenty-six, an ordinance adopting the updated comprehensive plan for the city of Belkirk. Whereas, the city of Belkirk has utilized a comprehensive plan as a tool to assist in making decisions related to the vision and planning of the community since the first iteration in nineteen seventy-four. And whereas, the city entered into an agreement in two thousand and seventeen with the Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission of Green County to update the city of Belkirk's comprehensive plan, which was completed in two thousand and nineteen. And whereas, in two thousand and nineteen, both the city of Belkirk Planning Board and the city council each reviewed the plan and recommended its approval. And whereas, the two thousand and nineteen city of Belkirk comprehensive plan remains in substantially the same form since the initial review, with the exception of one revision to the pedestrian, bike, and multi-use path map located on page twenty-two and attached here, too. And whereas, there have been previously adopted legislation related to the adoption and revision of the comprehensive plan. And whereas, the current vision of the comprehensive plan for the city of Belkirk, on file with the clerk of council, shall take control over any previously adopted comprehensive plan where inconsistencies may exist. And whereas, city council hereby desires to adopt the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan for the city of Belkirk as the official document to assist in the decision-making process for planning, visioning, and other legislative matters related to the city of Belkirk. Now therefore, the city of Belkirk hereby ordains, section one, that the comprehensive plan for the city of Belkirk, on file with the clerk of council, is hereby adopted. Section two, city council further finds and orders that this comprehensive plan shall supersede and take precedence over and control any future development. Section three, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that any and all deliberations of this council that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public, in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Okay, so everybody's probably wondering why the comprehensive plan is here again, and there are two reasons behind this. The original, it, it's been, it's been very interesting in looking at the history of the comprehensive plan, the previous version, um, the previous versions were adopted and modified by both ordinances and resolutions. So the last time that the comprehensive plan was modified was by a resolution. So we adopted our comprehensive plan by resolution, since that was, um, the most recent update to the com- comprehensive plan was done by resolution. So we found that since the comprehensive plan was adopted by both ordinance and resolution, we wanted to adopt it by ordinance in order to, uh, be very clear moving forward. So any update or change to the comprehensive plan moving forward will always be by ordinance. So this is just to formalize that and to get this on the right path. And it also had language in it just referring to, um, that this plan would supersede any others if there were, uh, was ever any confusion in, in regard to the comprehensive plan. Um, there was one change to the map, which was on page twenty-two. We did not attach the entire comprehensive plan, because it was unchanged, with the exception of the one map. There was only one line removed from this map, and it was the, there was a proposed multi-use path that went from approximately Dots up to Sugar Maple Place and through Sugar Maple Place. And that was updated, because Sugar Maple Place is all sidewalks. There was never any intention of a multi-use path to go over top of those sidewalks. And there is still the connection, um, which is the, the path from the cul-de-sac down to Dots, but since it is not a sidewalk or a multi-use path, um, it, it's removed, because it's not categorized in relation to the comprehensive plan. So I will show everybody the previous version, just so that you guys, um, have an understanding of what it did look like. So as you can see, there are two, actually, it was two purple lines that were mo- were removed. So they were, um, they were both in Highview Terrace, and there are no multi-use paths that were ever a part of that development. They have sidewalks, and then they have the one walking path that goes down to Dot. So this just clarifies that there was never an intention to put multi-use paths over top of those sidewalks in Highview Terrace. So that was the one change that was made. So hopefully that's clear to everybody, and, um, obviously, if anybody has any questions, I'm definitely willing to take those.
Melissa, for the, uh, public, uh, can you show the, the revised map as well? Is that possible?
Um, it's in the agenda packet, I can, I could go, and it would take me a minute to access it, to be able to get it up on the screen.
No worries.
I think I can share it, let me, you want me to try and share? I've got it up right now.
Yeah, I mean, if you can try to share, Pam, can you allow TJ to share? I don't know if you have to make that possible. Perfect, awesome, thank you, TJ.
Yep.
Is it up? Stop. Yeah, we can see it now.
Okay.
So in the version that I just showed, there were two purple lines that were over top of, uh, Highview Terrace that were removed.
Perfect, thank you.
If I would, for the, uh, public hearing of the ordinance, I will have a side-by-side, I think that'll be helpful. So I will put a side-by-side up on the screen share for the public hearing.
So with, uh, this view shown right now, that purple line that's going up from the Dots parking lot along the east side of Little Sugar Creek, um, what is the status of the transfer of that land for that, uh, access walk?
So we have always had an easement, which would allow for that to go in. So the, the land as part of the open space from Highview Terrace has not been transferred, but we do have an easement. So aside from the deeded open space property, we do have an easement to be able to install that.
Is that easement on the east or west side of Little Sugar Creek?
It's on the east side.
Okay. Is there a timeline for that, or is, are there hurdles to overcome yet?
To install?
Yes.
We do not have a timeline for that. Um, there's a lot of vegetation, uh, that would need to be cleared in order to make that, uh, a viable path. And then there is the, uh, big question of how you cross the Little Sugar Creek once you get down to McGee Park in order to be a safe crossing. So that's kind of the, the question mark. So I had talked actually with Ernie earlier today, and this is probably something that would be smart to partner with the Parks District on, since it would be more of a natural path versus, uh, uh, you know, formal sidewalk-type infrastructure installed. It would be more of a recreational kind of walking path.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, uh, what coordination was being done with the Parks District? Um, is it worth bringing up the discussion about the land acquisition?
All the letter that was sent to everybody?
Yes.
I don't have it right in front of me to speak to, but I mean, if, if you wanted to, TJ, I mean, I'd absolutely go ahead.
Okay.
Or we could just, we could speak to it at the next meeting, TJ. Um, I'm not sure how Pam had circulated that necessarily.
Okay, yeah, let's just do that, let's get that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
A little premature.
And if, if I may, while you've still got the map up, TJ, Melissa, I assume that removal of those lines satisfies the concerns of the Highview Terrace residents? satisfies the concerns of the Highview Terrace residents?
Correct.
So does that mean there is no walking path whatsoever from Dots up the hill to past the private, between the two private residences? Is that?
No, there is a walking path, but the, the way that these are, uh, the way that this, uh, map is categorized is multi-use paths and sidewalks, and it doesn't really fit either of those categories.
Okay.
So it's still on the record plan, so it will, it will certainly go in, but it would not necessarily fit the categories of this map.
Okay.
What this map was really showing was where existing infrastructure was and where proposed um, future infrastructure should go. And we, there was never an intention to put multi-use paths all the way up through Highview Terrace, or they would have been installed, um, during the development phase.
Okay.
It's just categorized differently is the short answer to that, basically.
Okay.
TJ, just to answer your question earlier, um, um, that's definitely, uh, my intention is to have a discussion with the Parks Districts about the possibility of, uh, taking that over and maybe ending, um, McGee Park to, uh, encompass the pathway and go on up to, uh, the new property that they're, uh, looking to acquire as well. So I'm at least floating that idea.
Okay.
Any more questions of the City Manager? Could we have a motion for the introduction of Ordinance twenty twenty-six, please?
Yes, I've just moved that we introduce ordinance twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. TJ, were you trying to say something or?
Yeah, I just had one other question. Um, considering the span from nineteen seventy-four to twenty twenty, is there any scheduled revisiting of the Comprehensive Plan? Is it done on, uh, five, ten, whatever frequency?
Well, since there was never any, uh, revisiting of it before, um, we did not necessarily set an interval in which to look at the overall Comprehensive Plan, but there is a Gantt chart that exists that, uh, tracks the different projects associated with the Comprehensive Plan that, uh, Planning Board, uh, reviews on a regular basis during their meetings. So, uh, they have been tracking the projects and the work that came out of this Comprehensive Plan. Since it hadn't been updated in so many years, it's a pretty massive undertaking in terms of, uh, projects, so it's gonna take quite a while to chip through, uh, a lot of the work. But I mean, of course, there will be different, uh, projects that kind of evolve, uh, through this, but it is definitely something that we're keeping tabs on, but at this point, we do not have anything scheduled in which to over, or to review the entire thing as a whole, just because it is so new and we're still trying to work through just understanding, uh, what, what kind of projects this is creating and trying to prioritize those.
If, if I may quickly, Melissa, even though I am a member of the Silver Tsunami and some may question memory. Um, TJ, right before I came on City Council and left Planning Board, we talked about that very fact that it had been so many years. And so, um, the Gantt chart that Melissa's talking about, if memory serves me right, at least every year or two, we had nominally said to put on the Planning Board's schedule a review of the major goals, major parts of the plan, um, and to eventually wicker out a way to regularly review it over the years and update as necessary. So does that, does that, um, satisfy you a bit more?
Yeah, um, I, I had two questions kind of in the back of my head. What was the reason for such a long span in it being reviewed? Um, and are there any barriers, uh, to, should something come up such as, you know, a significant event like a piece of property is donated or a developer comes in with a specific plan? Um, I just wanted to know if there are any barriers, um, or, uh, any protections also for the city um, to, uh, make this a living document, but not, not so that it's, you know, changed before the ink is even dry. Uh, I, I think there'd be some sort of a, a balance you'd wanna look for in there.
I know I can't answer why the Comprehensive Plan, uh, went so long without being updated since that was all before my time. So, um, all I can say is that you know, this is a visioning document and of course, there, there may be situations in which uh, would require a shift in thinking, uh, just as you're saying, if a property were to ever become, um, you know, developed or thought about being developed, this would still serve as a guide. And I mean, with us being almost all the way built out, there's not a lot of property that could come up that could provide that kind of an opportunity, but um, this, this did look at undeveloped properties that were within the community and and sought community input to see what the vision and what the community would want for those types of properties that were, um, un- undeveloped, so.
If, if I may quickly, wasn't, um, cause I keep, I, I kept getting Elaine and Eileen mixed up. Wasn't Eileen working as City Clerk before Pam?
No, she was the zoning um, person.
Okay. Well, maybe my memory is going, but when, when we looked at that plan um, and started going through it, I asked for a copy of the original and it took her a little bit of digging to get that up and scan it. And I remember asking, like you did, TJ, just why had it been so long? And I think it just kind of fell off the radar.
Yeah.
Lots of other things happening, um, the year two thousand, if you remember, the, you know, computers are all gonna shut down. Time goes on. So, um, it was, uh, it was a very educational experience going through it. And I think your comment with how, um, set in stone it is, well, we're about to vote on modifying it and it seems that, um, an issue came up. We've talked about it, addressed it. I mean, it, it seems to be, um, doable, not, um, totally set in stone, as you said.
Yeah. It's, it's a visioning document. There's nothing in here that can't be altered, uh, depending on the situation and what comes up. There's nothing that says we have to do this exactly the way it's shown. It, it's a vision of what we'd like to see. But it doesn't say we have to do it that way.
Correct. And one thing I'll add to that conversation is that in the past several years, there was some discussion about doing an update to Comprehensive Plan. There's a lot of pushback from the standpoint that why do it now? Because the city's basically built out. There's not a whole lot of stuff to, to really add to it. So there was some inherent pushback that the Comprehensive Plan did not need to be updated, although anytime we relied upon it for a new development or a new parcel of land to be developed, it was always kind of pushed back at council that, you know, why are you following this old plan? It's kind of be outdated by now. But there was some pushback that the city was pretty much built out. And so an update wasn't necessary. Any more discussion with regards to Ordinance twenty twenty-six? That's the case. We'll proceed back to, uh, Councilwoman Middlestetter for a motion.
Okay, well, I did it, but I'll repeat it. Uh, I moved that we adopt Ordinance twenty twenty-six.
Go ahead a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, a motion was made by Mrs. Middlestetter to introduce Ordinance twenty twenty-six and ordinance adopting the updated Comprehensive Plan for the City of Belbrook, and this was seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Havens?
Yes.
Dr. Van Valde Heisen?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Thank you, Pam. We have no resolutions this evening, but we do have a City Manager report.
Okay, so first thing, which is a pleasant surprise, on Thursday, the tenth, we received our second round of coronavirus relief funds in the amount of sixty thousand three hundred and eight dollars and fourteen cents. So that brings our total to a hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents. So that's incredible. Um, we are still guidance, new guidance just came out on September the second, so it's it's a moving target to try to figure out how to spend the money. So, which is why, you know, we've spent small bits of it, but you know, the delay in really exhausting the funds, I'm gonna push it right down to the wire, honestly, because anything could change by the October fifteenth deadline of having this money encumbered. So um, I will give, uh, another update on how the, uh, funds were used at the Family Resource Center. I know that, uh, I'd had a, I'm on, I'm an ex officio member of their board and, uh, I had already told their executive director that at the next meeting, I would like for her to report out on how they had spent the money that was allocated to them by City Council. So we will have another update on that at the next meeting, uh, but I just wanted everybody to know that we did receive another sixty thousand dollars, bringing our total received to a hundred and eighty. Our twenty twenty property taxes, our second half settlement was received and there were no decreases in what we received. In fact, uh, we received more than budgeted, um, which was surprising. So we received an extra thirty-two thousand to the general fund over budget, sixty-six K to the police fund over budget and fifty-two K to the fire fund over budget. So that totals about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted. So typically when we receive those numbers, um, that's, if you all remember when we did the, uh, the tax budget, uh, resolution, I think it was at the net, the last meeting, those figures are what go into the twenty twenty-one budget. So the figures that we received last July and were formalized in October were the amounts that we exceeded with this last settlement. So um, fire union negotiations, uh, this past week, I received the notice to negotiate, so that's gonna start. I do not have dates yet, but, uh, it will be starting up. I do not see a reason that we would have to delay it, kind of like we had to the police just because it was, uh, we were right in the middle of the stay-at-home order when the police were able to start negotiating and we had to extend theirs. And then just a reminder that the twenty twenty budget will be starting, uh, the first work session will be held, uh, before the October twenty-sixth city, regular city council meeting. So that's it for me.
Does anyone have questions of the City Manager?
I, I just have one suggestion. I see on the November thirty, twenty twenty note, uh, looking for information on how to share information with council. Uh, I don't know if it's an option, but, um, I've gotten pretty good at using Microsoft Teams. Uh, it's a cloud-based instantiation where any documents are up, people can comment, annotate, whatever, uh, in real time collaboratively. So it's not like, hey, I have to do changes, hit save, email, send. It's all in there. If you've ever used Google Docs, it's very similar to that. Um, so I don't know if that's available, but, uh, just something to consider.
Thank you.
And if I may quick, Mayor, I, I wondered, Melissa, um, you didn't say anything about the charging stations. Is that for a reason?
Uh, new business.
Okay, um, are, are we gonna? Go ahead.
I, I put it in my City Manager update just because I go over all the agenda items, but it's next on the agenda as a formal agenda item.
Sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Okay.
Any, any news on what, um, what we're doing to find a new, um, fire chief?
I do have a schedule. I have a full schedule. I kind of worked backwards in terms of his last day, how long it would take to put out a notice and do interviews and everything. So I have worked backwards. So all of that will begin in October. So
Okay.
I will share that timeline with council. I can put that down to share in the next CM update.
It, it's a little early, but I wanted to know what was happening.
I have a full timeline already, uh, established for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Melissa intended to ride by the bridge a couple of times this weekend, didn't make it. Any update? We saw on track to have it done by October thirty-one?
As far as we know, we haven't heard of any delays with manufacturing of the arch or anything like that. So, um, I know that it, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity out there, but, um, we just talked with our engineer just late last week and we haven't heard of anything that would require, uh, formal delay at this point. So I'm still hopeful.
Okay, thank you.
I drove down there today and it just is still a big hole and a big pile of dirt, but I guess that arch is the first thing that has to go in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions of our City Manager? Melissa, thanks for the report. Moving on, we have no old business, but we do have some new business. The MBRPC Electric Vehicle Charging Station Grant.
So in the packet, I had given, uh, a decent amount of information and also, uh, included what an attachment that showed what one of these chargers looks like. So the Ohio EPA has a program to fund installation of Level Two Electric Vehicle Charging Stations in twenty-six Ohio priority counties. And we are one of the twenty-six counties, but we are considered a, um, a second priority. So there were sixteen that were higher priority and then there were ten that were a second priority and Green and Montgomery County were both second priorities. So the chargers that this grant covers, um, like I said, there's an attachment that shows what they look like. They are dual chargers, so that means one charger can charge two vehicles. And this grant will fund a hundred percent of the cost of the charger itself and the installation up to fifteen hundred dollars per charger. So they, the priority is on publicly owned land. And so Jessica Hanson had been working with Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, who they have kind of championed the regional effort in order to identify, uh, the different locations in which, uh, these could go and the feasibility, and they're assisting through the application process for the grant. So they're kind of the, um, they're kind of organizing everything in our area in order to be able to submit for this grant request. So they came out and they did a visit. Uh, it was identified that the two best, uh, options in terms of placement would be at the library and at the city building. The city building is a little bit easier, excuse me, just because it's a, a little, uh, less lengthy in terms of a run for that, uh, electric to be able to go out to the parking lot. Um, the spaces are, are closer to the building and it's not that, it's not that much infrastructure to be able to get that connected, but the, the library's a little bit of a longer run. So um, MBRPC came out along with a couple of representatives that are, are associated with the grant. It came out on August thirty-first and Jessica and our service director, Ryan Paisley, were both, uh, in attendance for the site visit. And so these, these chargers that we would like to get council support in order to be able to, uh, put our, put our name into the hat, so to speak, for consideration for the grant. These chargers, part of the EPA's requirement is that they are already equipped to accept payments. So we could choose to waive the electric, uh, fee payment or we could structure the rate any way we wanted. If we wanted to try to charge a flat fee or first fifteen minutes are free and then after that we wanna charge. So there's full flexibility in terms of that. So the first question that I had is who pays for the electricity, electricity? And of course, that would be us. We would pay for the electricity, which is nominal. But we are able to recoup that cost in terms of being able to, uh, charge. So what exactly would it cost per month? It depends on a number of different factors. It depends on how many people are using it and for how long they're using it. Um, you know, some, so, some of these chargers, we might find are really heavily used. Some of them, uh, we might be surprised and really don't see that a lot of activity. So it's kind of up in the air in terms of exactly how much that might cost, but we are able to, uh, set rates and be able to recoup that electricity cost and it could actually end up being a small revenue source for the city. So if council is interested in pursuing the grant further, we would need to do a, um, letter of commitment and we have to have that submitted by September twenty-eighth, which is the day of the next council meeting, which is why we are talking about this tonight. So we would have to pay for all of the upfront costs and then we would be reimbursed for that. So the grant is supposed to be the grant, I think, is the award notice is gonna go out at the beginning of twenty twenty-one and then the project has to be completed within twenty-four months of executing a grant agreement. and then the project has to be completed within twenty-four months of executing a grant agreement, so. It would either be next year or the year after if we were to be selected, so. Again, we're not even a first priority county, we're a second priority county, and I'm sure that there are gonna be some pretty competitive locations that are gonna be putting in for this, because it's a pretty great deal, I mean, it's a it's a fifteen thousand dollar charger that could also provide a small revenue source for the municipality that, uh, implements it, so. That's basically what I have, so I'm just seeking from council some direction in terms of interest to move forward or not with this.
Melissa, uh, first question. Early, when you began talking about it, I thought you said fifteen hundred is what they pay up to?
Fifteen thou-
Fifteen thousand, so they pay up to fifteen thousand.
The chargers themselves are about twelve thousand dollars, so that leaves about three thousand dollars for, um, the make-ready piece of it, so. We know that that is- we know that it's possible to do it, but, you know, the library would be a little bit more and the city building would be a little bit less, so they will pay up to fifteen thousand dollars or the full cost of installation, if it happens to be fourteen thousand dollars, they would only give us fourteen thousand dollars, it's whichever is less.
Okay.
But if it costs sixteen thousand dollars, then we would have to pay the extra thousand.
So, what's the downfall for us to say yes and proceed?
I see a downside to this, honestly, I mean, i- if we can get them, let's do it. Uh, it can only be a benefit for our downtown and to, uh, help attract folks and entice them to stay, so. I'm definitely, uh, I definitely don't see a downside to this, and if, if we can get it, then that's great.
It's just a bigger if, because we're in a second tier.
Correct, and out of all of the different possibilities to go in Green County, um, there are definitely a lot more high-traffic areas that may take priority over us, but I think we should at least try.
Okay.
Well, so we're gonna have a problem with the, uh, parking in the library as far as having a couple spaces monopolizing these charging stations that otherwise could be used for some of the, uh, patrons of the library that don't have electric cars?
So, we have the library, and the library is supportive of installing these, but, yeah, they would, they would take up two spaces wherever they're placed, if, if they were being utilized and there was a car park there using them.
How many spaces do we have at the library, you know offhand, or?
I don't.
Okay.
But they wouldn't stay there except for when they're charging, right? I mean, the, the chargers would be at the end of the space, right, they don't take up the whole parking spot, do they?
Well, presumably, the parking space would be empty and for a charger to pull up on it, so you'd have a basically two spaces less than what you have right now to allow for people coming to charge at will.
That, that was my question for you, Melissa, was whether or not you were gonna set them aside solely for charger. Um, I mean, you can see wrinkles each way, if you set them aside, are they gonna be empty most of the time? If you leave them open parking, is somebody gonna take it 'cause it's open? So, that, that was only, the, the only thing I wanted to raise, that I, I have a feeling that, um, yeah, no kindness may, may go undeserved at some point. Um, but beyond that, Mayor, your question, when you pull into the library, there's one handicap and four or five slots on your right. And then behind the library, I think there's another six or seven slots. And then there are one or two right against the library building, but the employees typically use those.
Good.
Um, and then, since, uh, we got the entrance to the dairy shed blocked off, I've seen more people parking on the street and walking over there also.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Uh, Melissa, on- Yeah, Melissa, on the, uh, charging or, um, recuperating some costs, um, I would imagine there would be some maintenance involved, possibly somebody driving off with a cord stuck in their car. Or, um, the auditor, does, will that have to have a yearly, uh, inspection if we do charge, like for, um, calibration of the charging system, or I mean, the, the system that calculates the monies, um, so I, I'm just saying there might be other, other than the electricity, there might be some other costs to figure in.
There very well could be, I'm not a hundred percent sure on how all that would work, um, like you said, with the auditors and calibration and things like that, but, um, I can definitely look into it. I mean, even if, even if we go ahead with our letter of commitment and we find out we got it, um, we would still have to do a grant agreement, which would have to be approved by council, and we could definitely have further discussion at that point before we, uh, before we would solidify anything to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Is everyone in favor of moving forward, I think we ought to, and then if we do get the grant, I would like to see us charge some sort of a user fee for some of the things that Forrest mentioned.
Yes.
And it's probably easier to charge on the front end than it would be to start charging after we had them already in place, but I think at this point in time, you need a consent from council to go through and submit the letter. I guess, are we in agreement to do so?
Yes.
I am.
Anybody opposed to it? Okay, there you go, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports, service.
Sorry, I had it on mute, um, no report, Mayor.
Okay, safety.
Yeah, I just wanted to report back to council that, uh, on last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to do a ride-along. Uh, and I just wanted to say thank you to Officer Stephanie Bennington, uh, for putting up with me for several hours. Um, as well as Sergeant Tony Vetter for organizing that, and of course, Chief Doherty for, uh, uh, allowing that to happen, um, and I just wanna also say, uh, it was very comforting to ride around our city and to see the positive interaction that we have with the police force. Um, if I got a dollar for every time I waved at somebody, I'd be doing all right. Uh, so, uh, the, um, the, uh, relationship that we have with the police force was very good, uh, all positive things, um. I did have one recommendation, Melissa, if you are looking for anything to include in the, uh, regular newsletter, uh, possible, um, uh, security recommendations, things like keeping your home illuminated uh, at night, keeping vegetation trimmed back from windows, or any trends that are seen in crime reports to give, uh, residents any heads up of, uh, anything that we see in terms of trends. Um, and that's all the notes I have for safety, thank you.
Okay, thank you, TJ, finding it's an audit.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick, and Elaine, community affairs.
Uh, community affairs is, uh, in the midst of scheduling, uh, a committee meeting to review committees. Um, needs and whatever, so that's the only thing coming up, but we haven't, uh, the optional date for this week sometime, so that's still to be determined.
Okay, thank you, Elaine.
You're on mute, Mike.
The clerk.
Pam, I think it's T for clerk's update.
Am I muted or unmuted or in-between muted?
Okay, I'm unmuted now, oh my gosh, sorry. So, uh, future topics, well, hopefully tonight, we will have the work session on the community improvement corporations. Um, and if not, I guess we will reschedule that one. Um, also, uh, coming up future, we'll be discussing fire station consolidation results. And then, uh, there's some, several legislative items that will be coming, um, hopefully soon uh, in the next, uh, few meetings, um. Uh, the planning and zoning administrator has been working on, um, some, uh, vacancy registration requirements and, um, the rules and, and policies to follow for that, um, that's, uh, being reviewed again by the planning board. And, um, then, uh, as soon as we hear back from, uh, Steve McHugh, we do have the amendment to zoning code eighteen point twenty B, which will be coming soon. Uh, planning board has approved the draft that we have now, and so that'll be coming to council to be reviewed. And that's what I've got.
Okay, thank you, Pam. This brings us to open discussion, uh, Forrest, you wanna start us off tonight?
Sure, um, I just wanna bring up something I brought up a while back, um, before the COVID nineteen, I brought up the idea of changing the truck routes that include North Main and South Main Street. As a lot of citizens of Bellbrook are aware, truck traffic in the old village has created a bad situation for residents and business owners. Noise, dust, dangerous debris, and excessive speed have made downtown somewhat un- undesirable at times. Before council started to push to improve and develop downtown, I would ask business owners what we could do to improve business downtown, and truck traffic was always mentioned. Um, the reason we have so much truck traffic is the businesses on Ferry Road and a gravel pit on the corner of State Route forty-two and Centerville Road. Ferry Road has a malt place, concrete plant, and three other trucking businesses. With those types of businesses that, that close to downtown, that does generate a lot of trucks. Um, trucks also deliver, they take away product, I mean, it's, it's back and forth. So, it's not just one business or another that, and, and they're not doing anything unlawful. Um, if this change is made, truck traffic can still go through Bellbrook on Wilmington Pike, in the past, council has taken into consideration other traffic situations in other parts of the city, example, Kensington added stop signs and speed boards. Sable Ridge added a gate to close the road, Ivy Terrace added a breakaway gate. I encourage the mayor and other council members to seriously consider this change. Um, that I would bring it up.
Okay, thank you, Forrest, how does council feel about doing that, is this something we should have the city manager uh, proceed forward with, or something we would hold off in discussion internally beforehand?
I would like to see us proceed with it, I think it's, uh, it's critical to, uh, uh, revitalization, and I definitely think that there are plenty of alternative pathways for the trucks to run, and no person, uh, firsthand, sitting on the benches downtown trying to, uh, just have a phone call when the trucks go by, uh, you, you can't hear the, you, you can't hear the phone that you're talking on. Uh, and just recently, I watched a concrete truck turn right on seven twenty-five on Franklin going south on Main Street and, uh, clip a car that was sitting in the left-hand turn lane, um. It, uh, just seems like a, a big problem that we ought to get, get on top of.
I, I agree, I think it needs to be brought up, I also think it needs to be discussed amongst our township and city neighbors, it's a, it's a more of a regional issue than just Bellbrook. I mean, those cars are gonna have to go, and trucks are gonna have to go someplace, so.
And if, if I may, I mean, I, I don't disagree, I went running one morning down toward downtown, and my thought was, where are all these trucks coming from? But that said, um, if we're gonna discuss this, um, would it not be fair to hear from the business owners also? If there is an impact or not? Just, uh, just a question.
Absolutely involve the business owners. They're longtime, uh, established businesses, and it's only fair to include them in that discussion.
I, I would agree on including the business owners then, and Melissa, do we know exactly what we have to do to go forward with this, or?
Basically, it's a change in ordinance that just strikes Main Street from an approved truck route.
Okay. So, I guess next step should be that we would, uh, arrange some sort of conversation or some sort of discussion between city staff and the business owners, and possibly the township, maybe start with the township first?
We can do that.
Okay. Anyone who is opposed to doing it?
I think we need to at least investigate.
Okay. Let us do that. Okay, thanks, Forrest, anything else? Forrest, okay, you're fine. Ernie, anything for open discussion this evening?
Thanks, Mayor, uh, no, uh, uh, definitely, um, glad to hear Forrest bring that back up, uh, appreciate you doing that, Forrest, uh, I believe there was a, a draft of an ordinance that we looked at back in the spring, so. Um, we at least got the ball rolling somewhat, um. Outside of that, uh, I, I, I'm really happy to see us pull the comprehensive plan up, make some edits, treat that as a, a living document, um, and I believe, uh, we're going in the right direction there. And I appreciate the, uh, the effort on, uh, admin staff for the city for doing that. Looking forward to, uh, all those upcoming, uh, changes that, uh, the admin staff's working on too, uh, it sounds very exciting.
Thank you, Ernie. Councilman Hook.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, um, little shopping center across from, uh, Dots where, uh, Subway and Edward Jones is located, the carts that are being stood up, it looks like there's a charity, uh, going on. Um, I hadn't heard anything in council, I'm just wondering what's going on in that parking lot.
The organizers or owners have not notified the city of anything, so only what I've seen with my, uh, own and eyes in the passing are all I, all I know.
I, my understanding is there's a business going in to the restaurant area, where's that one was? Cooking classes of some sort?
Nobody filed it.
It's just, it's not just in the parking lot, there was a description on a, in the Facebook pages, but I didn't quite get it what, what, what it is. But it's got to do with cooking classes, and the proceeds are to, um, benefit, uh, adults with, um, disability, uh, cognitive disability. So, it's teaching people healthy cooking habits and how to cook and helping, um, a disadvantaged population in the process. That's all I know about it.
So, no formal permits have been filed with the city, there hasn't been any communication by individuals that are performing any of that work or update?
I don't think it's actually in place or started, that's just what they're hoping to do there, is what I understand.
Do they need permits for like the vegetable stand or the wagons or anything like that, Melissa?
Um, I know that we did, we did tell them that they needed permits and permission for the signs. Um, they replaced all the signs, which looked great, but they did not get permits or go through the village review board or anything for any of that either, so. Um, we were trying to start with signs and, um, the wagons kind of appeared in the last, I don't know, they appeared while I was on vacation, so we're trying to figure out what to do, um, about that, or, um, you know, it's kind of an oddity in terms of how that would be assigned in any sort of our zoning code, so. We're working on it.
I think they're decorative more than anything, is my take on it. Attention. Yeah, affect attention.
I didn't know about the permits, but it's awful nice to see something going on there, the flags have been up, something's happening in the parking lot, somebody's there. People are stopping and talking, and just from, you know, as we've tried here for years to get more people coming downtown, it's nice to see something happening there, so I hope the, um, the permit or sign issue, if there is one, is easily resolved, Melissa.
Yeah.
Anything else tonight, TJ?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Milstead.
Um, I did have a communication from a resident asking about-
Um, I did have a communication from a resident asking about um any re- restrictions on drone flyers taking their drones over private property. Um, the um, with them being more and more popular, uh, people tend to think it's okay to fly over someone else's backyard and that's an invasion of, that's like walking into someone's backyard uninvited. So we might need to um, it it's such a new technology, I think it's something that we do need to look at because there have been communities where it's become a real problem. I don't think it's a huge one here yet, but I'd like to keep it on the radar. Um, and the other thing I'd like us to keep on the radar is um residential lighting because people sometimes think brightening up the whole backyard or all around their house is a good idea. And actually, I know TJ, you mentioned illuminating the house at night, but there are very specific um guidelines for how to do that safely because too much light makes shadows, which makes it even harder. It makes it better for um nasty people to do their thing. So um it is something that you have to study, and certainly you don't want to put lights up that shine into someone else's um windows and and into their yards. Um, and it does mess up the um birds who are flying um when they migrate. It it messes up the migration patterns for birds. So um, kind of a balancing act of how much light to actually use in a residential area so that you're not disturbing too many things. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. Councilman David Vanville Heisen.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. And nothing tonight, sir. I think I've said enough. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Edwards.
I I don't have anything tonight either, Mayor. Thank you.
And I don't have anything other than schools in session. I think this week they're back to full time, or maybe that starts on Wednesday, but it seems like it's going on without a hitch. So we hope everybody can stay healthy and continue in that fashion. Do we have anybody out of the audience who wants to speak tonight, Pamela?
It doesn't look like anyone wants to speak.
Okay. Melissa, we heard back from our city attorney for our work session.
He is still in his other commitment.
Okay, so let's, I suggest at this point in time, we reschedule that?
We can definitely do that.
Okay. Does anyone on council have any additional items to bring before us this evening?
None, Mayor.
There ain't none. I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.